I turned it, I turned it on. This is connected.
I don't know if she's trying to make any sounds.
Oh yeah.
What was that for Randy? Was he turning mine off?
This is good.
When we talk it's gonna turn around and you're like, "What are you doing?"
Yeah.
But they couldn't literally turn it to look at us, just so you know. It could be that up close and personal.
What number is that?
But that's really gonna get annoying.
The camera?
Yeah, that's the camera.
Camera, oh, it's three. That's gonna be three.
You're right. Yeah, so we can turn it.
We should be able to.
Yeah, so we can turn it around. We got a close-up one there, Kristy.
Please do, please do.
I have two. It's like, it is, yeah.
When we talk it's gonna turn around and you're like, "What are you doing?"
What number is that?
But that's really gonna get annoying.
The camera?
Yeah, that's the camera.
Uh, camera, oh, it's three. That's gonna be three.
You're right. Yeah, so we can turn it.
We should be able to.
Yeah, so we can turn it around. We got a close-up one there, Kristy.
Take that.
Please do, please do.
I have two.
It's like, like this.
Why is your laptop so far?
Why is it not actually?
Well, that's my fear. I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I think so.
Are they good?
I've only got Mrs. Everly on. Just checking, Mrs. Everly, can you hear everything?
Why is not actually?
Well, that's my fear. I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I can see this is a lot of weird.
Why is your laptop so far?
I think so.
Are they good?
I've only got Mrs. Everly on. Just checking, Mrs. Everly, can you hear everything?
Are some people still starting?
They are, right now, you know, so.
What was that, what was it?
What was you about this?
You play the computer.
So I can't help out this people.
That's why.
Mrs. Everly, can you hear us now? Mrs. Everly, can you hear us now?
Give up yourself.
How are you?
Give yourself. That's cool.
You could just tell the.
Mrs. Everly, can you hear us? You're muted, but I thought I saw you say yes.
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Mr. Goetz, can you hear us?
Yep, all good.
Uh, how, uh, did we go?
We had about fourteen pinch up, about then.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And, I was hoping to get over.
Yeah, it's certain.
What, how?
Two full teens.
Okay, any mix, any relapse?
Yeah. Yeah, it's like forty, forty, around forty days. So getting everybody, we drove everyone over. So my husband's here.
Can I call a special board meeting to order? Will the board secretary take the role?
Mr. Jim Bard.
Here.
Mr. Dwayne Burt.
Here.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Here.
Mrs. Stephanie Everly.
Mrs. Everly is online?
Here.
Dr. Nathan Goetz.
Well, I'm here, I can, I can barely hear you all, but.
Yeah, I.
Barely.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Here.
Mrs. Becky Wolfinger.
Here.
Mr. Charlie Sooters.
Here.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Present.
Mr. Arian Gounkhar. Ms. Lily Kell.
Everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands un cambio, indivisible, et Deus justificab.
As we begin our deliberations this evening, let us once again be reminded of our duty to represent all of the children in the school community, regardless of age, sex, race, or creed, regardless of need or ability. And we now have a moment of silence to reflect on our thoughts, plans, and actions on behalf of the students of the Shippensburg School District. Thank you. Move on to agenda approval. This is a special board meeting, there is one topic only. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Mr. Sooters, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Burt, roll call.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Stephanie Everly.
I, I can't hear anything.
Mrs. Stephanie Everly. This is for agenda approval.
Can they maybe call in, Mr. Dr. Stevens?
Yeah.
Do you have Nathan, who's Nathan's number?
I do.
I'll call Steph.
Hey, we're gonna put you on the phone, keep you on my phone, okay?
Okay.
Okay, it's, uh, the, the motion is to approve the agenda.
Yeah.
I'll call him. Move on to the next.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mrs. Becky Wolfinger.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yes.
Mr. Dwayne Burt.
Yes.
This is Nathan Goetz.
This is agenda approval, Dr. Goetz. So you're, you're up, Dr. Nathan Goetz.
Dr. Stevens, can you talk, chat? Dr. Goetz.
Yes.
Okay, we, you are live on the phone.
So this is the, this is the agenda approval, Dr. Goetz, and you're up, Dr. Nathan Goetz.
What are we doing?
Agenda approval.
I'm sorry, did you say agenda approval?
Yes.
Yes, I, yes, thank you.
Mr. Charlie Sooters.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now open the meeting up for public comment. The public comments section at the beginning of the meeting is for agenda items, the public comments section at the end of the meeting is for any other items. So if there is any public comment regarding the agenda item, which is the school resource officer program, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and also indicate that you are a district resident, and the board welcomes your comment.
Hello, Dave Lindenmuth, District President, also, uh, School Safety Coordinator, and also the Emergency Management Coordinator for the Borough of Shippensburg. Uh, you know, in education, there, there's few things that, you know, people agree on, they're very passionate, they, they may agree, uh, all want the best interest of our students, but people see different ways of doing that. Um, however, on, on the twenty-fifth, administration met with Dr. Moyer, and within half hour, uh, the administration, the principals, the higher-ups felt that the Borough of Shippensburg contracting with their police department was the best bet. Um, they took it back to their counselors. On the twenty-sixth, we had, there was a special, a board meeting, we had the intermediate school, and, uh, Dr. Moyer gave a presentation, and, and we're all behind that recommendation. Um, I know we had, there was a meeting last week, and there was a three-way tie. I'm just, like to tell the board, um, you know, we're still at the high school, and talking with counselors and the principals today, we're still behind the Borough of Shippensburg Police Department. I think one of the biggest benefits is the, the intel, you would call it, you know, the, the, having them in the borough, there's a lot that goes on. Um, there was a fatal shooting over the weekend, and though that was in the township, borough police were there, they were the ones who stopped the gentleman, or met up with him, and, and secured the weapon. Uh, we had an incident here yesterday, um, wasn't a simple pushy shove-y type thing, and it continued in the evening, uh, in town. And so the borough police were there working, again, and, and I do have, uh, you know, an issue, uh, with some parent behavior, you know, in the borough, how that's influencing their kids and other kids in the district's actions. So we've already got a group that's already working with us and for us. Uh, Shippensburg's a little unique, we got PSP Chambersburg, PSP Carlisle, we got the university police, right in the, in the center, we've got our schools, and the borough police department. So I just wanna go on the record and say that's where I'm at.
Thank you, David. Any other public comments?
Yeah, hi, Darren Donovan, I am a resident of the district. Um, missed the last couple meetings here, so I'm trying to catch up on some things. I do have some comments from another, uh, citizen, um, in the community that couldn't be here this evening, so I did just wanna, um, speak about that. Um, you guys would consider using G-Force? Again, I know that seems to be the borough, seems to be the popular opinion right now. Um, with G-Force, they can provide multiple officers, and they are within our budget. They also can provide in-house security for events. Um, they're already established in other districts, and the borough can also keep doing as they do now, patrolling the area outside our buildings, and act as a line of defense if they were needed. And that, that was the comments from that individual. Um, if I were to say a couple things here. Um, if we do go with the borough police, um, do all schools fall within the borough limits? Will they, will all schools be treated the same? Will they all receive the same security? Or are we gonna be picking and choosing which one gets protected more than the other? Um, if we can't protect all of our students and staff equally right now, then at least get a plan in place for the future, and provide the details on when that can be established. That's, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Any other public comment? Move on to the agenda item, the administration recommends the board, I'm sorry, I mean, start, it's three A. The administration recommends the board approve authorization to enter into formal negotiations with the Shippensburg Borough Council to establish a school resource officer program with the Shippensburg Borough Police Department. Is there a motion to approve three A?
Dwayne Burt, so moved.
Motion made by Mr. Burt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sooters, discussion from the board.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to say, um, regarding this topic, you know, I had the opportunity on the safety committee to sit through all of the different options, um, that were on the table. Um, I strongly believe that entering into formal negotiations with an entity that cannot effectively or efficiently meet our needs, um, is not fiscally responsible. Um, we learned during the very beginning of this process that we need more than one officer, and that one officer is not enough. So to enter into, uh, a formal negotiation, uh, knowing that they cannot effectively meet our safety and security needs for all buildings, all staff, and all students, um, it's similar to committing to an eight million dollar stadium that doesn't meet all of our needs. I support an SRO program, but I, I do not support, um, this partnership. That's everything.
Thanks, Steph. Anybody else?
Yes, for me, uh, I, you know, I've been, I was chief of Shippensburg Police Department for seventeen years. Everybody talked about Chief Scott Miller, great guy, known him for a long, twenty, twenty years. I also know, controls the Shippensburg Police Department. He does not control Shippensburg Borough. And I guarantee you, from seventeen years of experience at Borough Council, and you, if you go that route, are gonna regret it. For my seventeen years, I got cameras downtown, I got two new cars, I got lockers, got a bunch of other things in the station. You know how I got them? I had to go around and beg the Menacaw, VFW. Closer? Okay, VFW, home, Menacaw, Hub City, and, uh, Moose, and we found an obscure grant from a rural place. That's how I funded the police department. Every time I went to the Borough Council, we could not afford it. I couldn't, I got one officer in seventeen years, they hired one officer. The chief behind me, sorry, uh, one officer, wanted an officer, didn't get it. Chief Miller wanted officers, didn't get it. So I don't criticize him for doing what he's doing, 'cause if I was in his position, I'd do the exact same thing. But I know dealing with Shippensburg Borough Council, and the things over the years, but, Mark, when we first got on the school board, you made a, made an ad hoc committee, right? For the park, for the pool stadium, for the stadium, you put an ad hoc.
Back then, yes.
Where was this supposed to be? We was going to go down, talk to the borough about putting the stadium down in Memorial Park, correct? Come to agree, see what agreement could be.
Correct.
Kevin Plaster was representing the borough at that time. I got all the emails and all this stuff. He went through hell, and still never got it done. That's why I'm a, that's why I changed from Memorial Park to the high school, 'cause we couldn't get anything done. And you're gonna, if you go tie in with the borough, you're gonna find out why the rest of the townships have not come to the borough. So you do what you want, I'm telling you, putting you on notice now, if you do this, you will live to regret it.
Anybody else?
I have some comments to make. So I, I think it's important for us to make sure that we note to the community that this is not a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for one police officer, it is a hundred thousand dollars potentially, and seventy thousand dollars worth of one-time expenses. I think that that's been misconstrued, um, out in the public eye, and so people are, are thinking we're paying a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I know I spoke with the several people today, it's a hundred thousand dollars. And again, this is gonna be something that we are negotiating, we are not under any kind of contract as of yet, that number is flexible, and it also was overinflated to make sure that we had everything lined out. Um, I personally think it's very important to keep these dollars within our community, um, you know, we have our, our taxpayers that we are beholden to, and so when we have a relationship with the borough that they are working on nurturing with us within the school district. So many times we keep reverting back to the past, and I wasn't a part of the past, several of us on the board were not a part of the past. And I'm a part of trying to rebuild relationships within our community to our, all of the community entities that are gonna be important to make things happen in this school district for us. And when we constantly throw people under the bus, that is not doing a service to our school district, and the relationships that we are trying and attempting to build within our community.
One, one more thing, the borough and the Shippensburg Police Department are on arbitration. Shippensburg Police Department is one of the lowest-paid police departments in the area. They also do not have benefits, they are in the process of going to arbitration, so the numbers you see now, I guarantee you it's gonna change.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll just be real, real quick, um, I, I've been an advocate for this program or position, uh, basically for like ten months, and this was definitely something that I support, as we go forward, this is something that I think we, as a community, no matter how you feel about the entire thing, I think everybody can, can agree that there's some sort of need to be met, um, or, sorry, that we need to meet. Uh, the timeline for this hasn't been ideal, I was really hoping to have this in for the first day of school, and I know logistically it just didn't happen, um, but I, I appreciate, I know he's here in a crowd, Dr. Moyer's efforts, um, through this whole thing, 'cause he's been a huge advocate for this program as we go, uh, forward. And I, I, for the record, I totally support, kind of to back what Becky said, that on the time, uh, down the road, I think that we probably need to get to the point where we have our own police force, and I totally support that down the road. My only fear with that is that we're going from like zero to a hundred, we don't have any experience with an SRO in our district right now, and whether that's teachers, counselors, very few of our administrators have, have dealt with that before, um, and I, I just think that this is a way for us to kind of get our feet wet into the process. Um, not, you know, I don't support something that's a ten-year-long deal, um, it's, it's not, of course, like a year, 'cause we need, I, I think we need a minimum of two years, and that can all be negotiated to see how the program goes, but, uh, I do, I support this, I'm happy that we're finally to this point, we should've been a little quicker, but I'm happy to where to this point, um, that's all I have. I do, one more thing, I do appreciate all the meetings, and, and, you know, Chief Scott, and, and Steph, and myself, Dr. Moyer, all the administrators, there was a lot of time that went into this, it took, as I said, a tremendous amount of time. All of the people who, you know, came and spoke to us, I appreciate that, we had some seriously knowledgeable people about the subject talk to us, um, and I appreciate all of those people's time, thank you.
Any other comments? Move to roll call.
Mrs. Stephanie Everly.
Yeah.
Dr. Nathan Goetz.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
No.
Mrs. Becky Wolfinger.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
No.
Mr. Dwayne Burt.
Yes.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Sooters.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Six yes, three no, motion carried.
That concludes the special agenda, we'll now, uh, briefly open it up for public comment regarding any other non-agenda item. Seeing none, are there any other board comments?
I just wanna state, um, so, it's really frustrating to call in, like, uh, and try to be a part of this meeting, and the, the quality of, and what, can we try and get that figured out as far as, if, I'm, I can't hear hardly anything, and it's really difficult to, uh, participate with, um, some of the tech concerns.
I understand, Steph, and we're gonna work on that, because we thought we had it. I lost her. Yeah, Steph, we're gonna work on that, because I thought we had this fixed, and I thought everything was good to go here with these new cameras and everything, but apparently it's not, so, um, thanks for those comments. Um, before we adjourn, the board's going to meet an executive session to discuss two items, a personnel matter and a student relations matter. Is there a motion to adjourn the special session? Dwayne Burt, move to adjourn. Second. Steph, I'll call you back when we get to executive session.
All right.